It is now 9:43 a.m. and a form of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of October 10, 2023 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and order of priority. Are there any items that board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. I would like to add to the agenda a resolution opposing Senate Bill 463 requirement of FAFSA completion for high school graduation.
We have a motion to add to the agenda. We have a second from Mr. Bullock. Any discussion associated with adding this to the agenda? Not on the merits of, but adding it to the agenda. Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly? Oh, she's absent. I apologize. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Do I have any other motions to amend the agenda?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a resolution to the agenda titled Board Resolution and Recognition of October 2023 as Dyslexia Awareness Month.
Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Snyder. We have a second from Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion on the motion to add to the agenda? Not the merits of, but the motion to add to the agenda.
So this would be a resolution that would be helpful in sort of walking alongside what the legislature is doing and the work they're doing in the House.
Very good. Hearing no other discussion. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly absent. Oh. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other recommendations for additions or deletions from the agenda? Ms. Snyder.
Yes, I will also move to add a resolution to the agenda called Equal Opportunity to Sports for Homeschoolers, and I'd like to read it into the record.
Very good. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Support.
We have support from Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder, to you to read it into the record, please.
The State Board of Education supports educational freedom and access to school sports for all Michigan children, whereas research demonstrates and supports the positive benefits for students who participate in school sports. Whereas laws in Michigan High School Athletic Association, MHSAA, policy extend participation in public education sports programming only to those students who satisfy the academic requirements of the local public school district. Whereas we live in a state that continues to work towards being educationally free and recognizes parents as the decision makers of what academic option is best for each individual student. Therefore, be it resolved that the State Board of Education encourages all local public school districts and the MHSAA to grant sports team access to resident homeschool students of their local districts regardless of their academic enrollment.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. We've read it into the record. Any other discussion associated with adding this to the agenda? Please.
Just, I've had a number of parents and districts that have reached out and suggested that this be something we get behind and that there be legislation, not that we can sponsor that obviously, but we can encourage this at a local level.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else on adding this to the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. Please.
Well, this is just to add.
This is, this is a vote on, on whether we add it to the agenda. Yes, sir. Is that, is that a, is that a pulling back of the hand?
Yeah, I pulled the hand back.
Very good. Okay, all right. Hearing and seeing no additional discussion. If we could have a roll call vote on adding this resolution to the agenda.
Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Any other motions associated with the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. If I could have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Motion from Dr. Pritchett, seconded by Mr. Bullock. Any, any discussion on the agenda as amended? Hearing and seeing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. At this time, Ms. Liz Evans, State Board Executive, will introduce members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning. You have just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice, Chairperson of the Board and State Superintendent. To his left around the table are Board President Dr. Pamela Pugh from Saginaw, Board Co-Vice President Ms. Ellen Cogan Lipton from Huntington Woods, NASB delegate Dr. Mitchell Robinson from Oakmoss, Ms. Nikki Snyder from Dexter, and Ms. Candace Jackson, the Michigan Teacher of the Year from Detroit Public Schools Community District. Seated behind them in, over here on the platform is Board Co-Vice President Ms. Tiffany Tilly from West Bloomfield. Back to the table, to my right are Mr. Tom McMillan from Oakland Township, Board Treasurer Mr. Marshall Bullock from Detroit, and Board Secretary Dr. Judith Pritchett from Washington Township. Virtually, we have joining us today Ms. Stephanie O'Day, the Governor's K-12 Policy Advisor, ex officio.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. Public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 p.m. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00 p.m. today. Provide public comment by telephone. Please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete a green public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed again on the MDE webpage at www.michigan.gov/MDE. On World Mental Health Day, it is a only fitting that we begin today's agenda with a presentation from Howell High School's Hope Squad. During this presentation, we will hear from student and staff from Howell High School. They will be presenting on the success of their suicide prevention initiative, Hope Squad. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Diane Bolzinski, Deputy Superintendent Division of Finance and Operations, Mr. Jason Schrock, Principal of Howell High School, Mr. Eric Schrock, Physical Education Teacher and Coach, Howell High School, Ms. Michelle Hutchison, Program Consultant for Behavioral Health at Howell High School, and our students, Melitza Addison and Kara, all from Howell High School. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. There will be a short PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I'm Jason Schrock, the Principal at Howell High School, and joined with an outstanding team of building leaders, district leaders, and ISD leaders and our students, which are most important. I just wanted to say thank you for prioritizing student voice and carving out time to hear from them directly. Hope Squad is just that for us. It is a result of student voice. It's a result of listening to our students and what they've, what they need and what they need from us in terms of advocating for themselves and their mental health. We have a couple of, a couple of slides just to give you a sense of what is a Hope Squad. It is a suicide prevention peer-to-peer model, but most important, we can't wait for you to hear directly from our students, their stories and the impact it's had on their lives and the lives of their peers. I'm not sure who's our tech person and how we can advance the slide. That's you. Thank you, Michelle. All right.
Are you ready for us?
Yeah, we're ready. This is an overview from the founder of Hope Squad, just to give you a little bit of a flavor of, of the purpose behind it and how it, how it's utilized. And we'll be happy to answer questions about how we've specifically partnered with the ISD in utilizing 31N, 31AA funds to really make this happen. But just wanted to give you an overview of Hope Squad using this video.
In high schools across the country, a crisis.
Who here knows somebody personally who's contemplated suicide? Wow. Every single one of you.
Suicide now the second-leading cause of death between the ages of 10 and 18. For Utah Principal Dr. Greg Hudnall, it's more than statistics. After he was called to identify the body of one of his 14-year-old students.
I literally threw up and sobbed. I made a vow that I would do everything that I could to help prevent suicide.
He founded Hope Squad, a way to help kids change how they talk about mental illness.
Those young people feel like they're the only one, that they're embarrassed, they're struggling.
The program gives students the tools to recognize those in need and get them help.
I don't think that most people understand that people do say that they're going to commit suicide most of the time before they do.
There are now more than 500 squads across 18 states and Canada. Another 100 will begin next year.
We're having this connection now. We're having this relationship now, and I care about you.
Students are chosen by their peers and specially trained, meeting regularly. This is Hope Squad's first year in Mason, Ohio, and the first year without a suicide since Abby Gadio started at the school four years ago.
Do you think Hope Squad has saved lives this year?
For sure. I think that because of Hope Squad, we get it, we get to those students early enough.
That stigma is breaking down. Students are willing to accept help.
Fifth grader Valerie Golvar recently spoke up when she saw a friend was cutting herself.
She told me about it and said, "Don't tell anyone." And my immediate reaction was to go straight to a Hope Squad advisor or an adult.
A move that may have made all the difference for that student and her peers.
The best part about Hope Squad is just knowing that you're able to help.
Help and hope at a time they need it most. Kristen Dahlgren, NBC News, Mason, Ohio.
Hey, NBC News fans. Thanks for checking out our YouTube channel. Subscribe.
Thanks, Michelle. So the Hope Squad has provided us with resources to train our students at being active participants with their peers and watching out for suicide signs, suicidal ideation, and getting them connected with resources. And we'd love to have you hear from some of our students directly who've gone through that training and our Hope Squad leaders.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Addison Watts. I'm a junior at Howell High School, and I'm the Hope Squad President. So I've been in Hope Squad since my freshman year, which was around the time Howell started this program. So over the last three years, I've been able to help many students through their suicidal thoughts. And during that time, I've listened to some of the battles people have struggled with. And I'd like to share one that really impacted me this year on my birthday. There was this girl who I knew from one of my classes, and she had texted me early in the morning some pretty cryptic messages, ones that led me to ask if she was contemplating killing herself. And she told me in full confidence that if she kept on the path she was going, she wouldn't be able to make it very long. So using the training techniques I learned from our advisors, I listened to her and what she was experiencing, which was the combined pressures of college applications, the constant strain of social media, high school relationships, and other things in life that just kept on piling on. And I knew that she needed help. And I know firsthand how it feels to be overwhelmed and imbalanced. So that's what Hope Squad really is all about, being someone people can come to in full confidence with full support. With help from teachers that advise the Hope Squad members, we were able to help this girl with the resources we had, including the 988 suicide hotline and OK to Say. And thankfully, she used them. And today, she is getting that mental help that she needs, and she's doing really well. This experience stuck out to me not only because it made me realize we are never going to know what's going on in people's lives until we start listening, but also because I played a part in saving my friend's life. It showed me how impactful Hope Squad truly is and how everyone has the ability to change a life or save one. Being in many different groups in my community has led me to meet many different people. And as Hope Squad and the conversations about mental health begin to grow in my community, I've noticed how it's brought us together, and I feel the unity and support Howell High School has already started showing. Thank you, guys. And now I'll turn you over to Melitza, our secretary.
Thank you, Addie. Good morning. I did not know much about myself when I was just beginning my freshman year. One thing I did know, though, is that part of what made me who I am is my desire to help others. So when Molly Perrin, along with other students, brought the idea of Hope Squad to Howell High School, they decided to begin recruiting people by sending out a nomination form where the students that received the most nominations per grade level were contacted. Therefore, I received a letter that was addressed to me, Melitza Greta Huerta, that said that I was invited to the information meeting for the Hope Squad. I told people how thrilled I was when I got nominated for this because it sounded incredible and it meant that my peers trusted me. To this day, every time I see an opportunity to talk about Hope Squad, I will do it because just in the first two years of it here at Howell High School has already made a difference. For example, we now have a better-known established referral process for students whose well-being we are concerned about. This has made it a lot easier for those who need it to be able to access it, thus improving the overall well-being of the community. Another difference that this program has made is for students like me, who love to help other students, such as my fellow Hope Squad members, who will gather their way to help at every opportunity presented. Don't get me wrong, I think that this is a beautiful trait for someone to have. However, these students tend to burn themselves out because they take a lot on. In speaking from experience, not always the best at establishing boundaries. So when we had a lesson on boundaries last school year as one of our training sessions, I, along with other fellow Hope Squad members, started caring about our boundaries a little more because we learned that if we want to help others, we will be more effective at it when we're in a better state mentally. I think another great contribution this program has made is has made it a lot easier for the community as a whole to approach conversations surrounding mental health. There has been a shift in language that's been utilized, and people, including me, feel safer opening up to talk about this. More awareness has also come in how we lack resources in different languages and how these can lead to disparities within mental health. As someone who comes from a household who's spoken tongue is not English, it means the world to me that more attention is arriving at this. The best part of this is that we're in our earliest years, so I know that this program will continue to expand within Howell High School, across the district, and the state, even across the nation this year as we have one Michigan student on the National Hope Squad Council. With an established executive board this year, we're hoping to execute our projects, including a daddy-daughter dance. While having a dedicated staff and members in this organization have greatly contributed to its success, this has also been possible thanks to other mental health organizations across the state and people like yourselves willing to listen to student voices. This would not be possible without your support. Thank you. Now I'm passing it on over to our publicist, Kara King.
Hi, my name is Kara King, and I'm the publicist for our Hope Squad. I'm a junior at Howell High School. Today, I'll be sharing a personal story on behalf of a student who graduated from our high school last year, and I'll be reading it from a perspective. My story begins back in the ninth grade when I met a friend who would forever change my life. We started talking a lot and soon became best friends. We talked all day and night and truly became so close. We would talk about anything. We started opening, opening up about our emotions, and I learned that they had a very low self-esteem. They had dark thoughts, and those thoughts turned into thoughts of suicide. Nobody talked to me about how to deal with this. As their best friend, I tried to be there and talk. Most nights, I'd stay up till about 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. helping them. I'd listen to their problems, offer solutions and empathy, and assure them that they were wanted in this world. I made a promise to help them. I kept my promise. I continued to help. I was so worn out after staying up night after night to help them, until one night I fell asleep before we could talk. Now, this doesn't sound like a huge deal, except it was. I felt they relied on me to save them from their thoughts. That night, they made their choice. They said goodbye to me. The next morning, I woke up and felt that gut-wrenching guilt from falling asleep, which quickly turned into a different feeling as I read the messages. It took a full 60 minutes to read them all, contemplating, deciding, saying goodbyes, not going through with it, deciding again. This went on for hours. Then they said their final goodbye. When I read through all the messages, I told my parents and we called the police, and we learned that they were alive. Years passed as I continued to be that supportive friend, and they got happier and more confident. They seemed to look at the world from a glass-half-full perspective, and they seemed to be really thriving, until about a year ago. They decided once again to take their own life. They probably wouldn't be here today if a family member had not intervened. Looking back, I realize I am not a therapist, no matter how much I wish I was. This time, they finally got the professional help that they needed. This experience opened my eyes to the fact that I cannot be the only one in this situation. There must be other helpers out there going through the same things I did, who do not know what to do, who feel as powerless and helpless as I did. There must be people who need help for the people who care. Doctors cure cancer, lifeguards save people from drowning, and firefighters save people from burning buildings. But who saves somebody from drowning as the thoughts flood their mind and the water gets too deep? The lifeguard isn't there. Who saves people from an internal fire and the flames that consume them? The firefighter doesn't know there's a fire. I joined the Hope Squad because I have hope. I hope that we can all help every single person who needs it if we look hard enough. I hope that not all is lost and that this isn't the end. It's just the beginning. In Hope Squad, we are trained on how to help others who need it. We are trained to look for warning signs that somebody could be contemplating suicide. We learn how to listen, how to help, and how to refer them to professionals. I've personally been involved with Hope Squad for three years now. People have come to us for help, and they will continue to. Anyone can do this work. Sometimes all it takes is a smile. Thank you.
Again, thank you for giving our students time and space to share their stories. You know, these three ladies are our Hope Squad leaders, but we have about 40 Hope Squad-trained students at the, at the high school who are just that. They are, they're trained to listen to their peers, to, to question where they are, to refer them to professionals, and to get them connected to, to the mental health that they, that they need. Hope Squad would not be possible without your support, and I appreciate your time. Be more than happy to answer some questions, maybe put the students on the spot if, if there's some student questions about their experience. But just wanted to thank you for your time and allowing us to share our story today.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, presenters. Board members, questions or comments? Mr. Bullock, Ms. Lipton?
Well, I just wanted to commend you guys. It takes a, a great sense of maturity to even have the willingness to listen. Adults don't even listen. So to, to, to be able to listen to your peers and have that kind of compassion and concern for others, it's, it, it requires a lot of, uh, social engagement, like social interaction, and have those kind of techniques. You also, you said it, you also have to, as you're going through those techniques and learning that training, you're learning about yourself. So you have to find your center in order to be effective at what you do. So I just want to commend you guys for being that steadfast in this endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Ms. Lipton, Ms. Snyder.
Thank you all for that presentation that really was really, really powerful. I have some questions in terms of sort of the infrastructure and what have you. So if I heard you correctly, the nominees came from within the student body. So it was definitely something that the student body embraced. Yes. Do you feel as though you have enough capacity? In other words, I think you said 40, 40 people go through the training?
Currently, 40. Student, 45, yeah, 45 students.
So, and basically, and it's within the high school? Yes. So is 40 about the right size? Or were you, in other words, were you limited in any way to that number? Or is that sort of like a best practice concept?
A little bit of both. So it's somewhat best practice. It depends on your community and your school. I think it depends on the number. So for us, we have about 2,200 students. 2,000. Right. And so we average, we, we thought about having about 10 per grade level, 9 through 12.
Okay.
So that was our assumption of having a, an impact of each grade level. And like I said, it's not exact science that we get trained on as an advisor. It's make it fit for your community.
And from the student's perspective, and now that you've been, does that, does that feel about right?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay. Were there any, like, resource limitations that, that you felt? In other words, things that you, if you were giving advice to a school that wanted to do something like this, did you? Well, I guess, number one, any lessons learned? And number two, were there any resource limitations in terms of, you know, we wanted to do this, but we couldn't because? Why? I would love to answer that, too.
You would like to?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Michelle Hutchison. I'm a 31N position, so that's a mental health provider within the IS, ISD ESA. And, you know, initially for the startup of Hope Squad, our ESA was able to fund the program as a startup because of some of the mental health dollars that were being pushed through legislation. However, you know, it was needing resources to continue the movement or the momentum of the program. So this year, as we're looking at expanding into our middle schools and actually expanding our program within the high school because it has been so successful, we've utilized dollars through the 31AA funding, which, that's grant funding that just recently came out. So it has taken that collaboration from the district, and, and Mr. Schrock's funding through the high school itself has helped us a lot, the funding that came for initial programming through the ESA, and then now the 31AA dollars have helped us continue. But honestly, we've spoken to many districts within this state who have said, "But funding is a concern. How do we do this?" And we were wise enough and had, had enough support from our administration to be able to use those grant dollars. Okay, so I just want to make sure, so the startup funding came from, from ISD funding? Correct. And then maintenance and potential expansion would come through funding within the, in other words, local? Okay. So do you, does, does the ISD right now at existing funding levels, would they have enough to do startup funding for every school in, within your ISD that wanted it? Or is, is the, the startup funding a constraint? I, I could not speak to that for our ESA, but I, I do know at this point, we had discussed the local paying because of those grant dollars that came through. But I would say, as we've talked about other districts in our county Yeah. wanting to begin some of the programming funding is certainly a concern. Okay. And then just last question. In your experience, are you aware of any community partners that could be leveraged for a school district that, that simply didn't have the funding or couldn't locate it? I'm just thinking, you know, did you, have you come across in your programming any community assets that a community could rely on? We have not asked the community for funding for the program because of the mental health dollars that are coming through that's able to cover this. Okay. But that's a really fantastic question because one of the models of Hope Squad, part of the model of Hope Squad is to include your community. So we have gone to community partners before, before the, the AA grant funding came in and asked for them to create signage for us. They gave us t-shirts. One of the things our students do is they wear t-shirts weekly so that other students are able to identify them. And those resources were donated to us because many adults in the community, many business owners will say, "We've had a family experience with suicide. We want to support this initiative." And I know in other states, for example, Utah, they have a lot of community support too. And there are other districts, for example, Genesee in the state of Michigan. I was just thinking about your question back to the ISD. Their ISD is helping to fund their startups in their districts as well, so.
I'll also say that Howell has some great partnerships with our community providers, community mental health. We share staff in our buildings from community mental health. We also partner with private organizations. Our alternative high school has social work from Connection Youth Services, which is a private provider. So there are partners that care about kids in the community that are willing to work with schools.
Right. I was just, as you were, as you were presenting, it made me think of sort of the full-service community school model that's used in other states, and it's just starting to sort of catch on in Michigan. And so that's why I was sort of curious because I think sometimes an organization started and embraced by students can sort of be the catalyst Yeah. for engaging community partners around a sort of a community approach to, you know,
know, a pressing problem that does affect the school, but it also affects the entire community, so.
And to your point, that's absolutely true. I have fourteen years' experience in the state mental health system and then transitioned my work into education. And so often what happens is, as students are referred, you know, they're coming to me because I'm working systems, but also direct work with students. And then, and then we have to say, okay, now what are we doing with this student? If it's after hours, okay to say is handling that, but those students are still being referred to mental health systems. And then if they're coming to me, or an adult who then sends them to me, then we're calling our mental health system and saying, through CMH, can you assess or evaluate this child? Or parents are taking those children, parents are always involved, but they're taking those children to the local hospital. And then you're looking at what, what's the referral system post? And we have struggled with that because of, you know, all of, all of the momentum that's building in the mental health systems. But that's where our community is starting to really build more collaboration than, than even the great collaboration we've had. So CMSA supports Hope Squad, and it's also an evidence-based programming. And, and so that's been really nice because then our, our local community can support the work.
I just, I love the fact that you've used the peer-to-peer model.
It's amazing.
To literally break down some systemic silos that school districts and communities all across the state base, so.
And I appreciate that question, too, because it's one of the things that we always say is it takes, was it a village to help a kid, or the community to save one?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I do want to say, though, that our students, the programming is so beautiful, that the program of Hope Squad, that it's really a leadership model. We're really teaching them boundaries, that it's not their role to, to necessarily dig in, that they just know to have their ears attuned and then how to send support to adults. So in Addison's situation, she knew to call, okay to say, and the police went out to the home, found the parents, and, and truly saved this child's life just three weeks ago, four weeks ago. So, or Cara, I'm sorry, Cara. And so that's where, you know, it, I really like this program because it's very well-balanced, and it's a way to help our students not carry the burden that you heard in Cara's speech, and that's what we're hearing from our students. We are carrying that burden. I've seen students that don't know what to do with a peer, experience some trauma from what they hear. And so knowing where to go and how, and that there is, they don't have to hold a secret, they can tell adults, is the power of the program. And then that's where lives are saved because many students, even in my office two weeks ago, have said, but I know I'm going to lose them as a friend. So we have that conversation. If you tell me and we give them help, their life is saved, and rarely ever do you lose them as a friend. Otherwise, you're carrying the burden yourselves. So, so the skill sets that our students have learned set them up for life. As Malita said, she has learned about herself and then has learned how to continue to be who she is, but with really good skills and boundaries.
Yes.
Powerful program.
Eric, can you share about how we include parents as part of this model?
Yeah, so there's a nice part of the section that we learn about bringing the parents involved and getting a parent's support and making sure parents, what, what I do, too, is required, is I open up the forum of all the parents who are, have their students who accepted to be a part of the program to come meet and answer any questions that I can, or Michelle or I together can answer for the parents. So making sure the parents are educated the best to our ability also, and that gets the community involved. And so, yeah.
That, that sounds to me like that would be like considered a best practice if you were advising someone on how to create a program.
Yep.
Okay.
And we have parents here today, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Snyder?
Just a couple of things before that, just very good work being done in an area that's really tough to navigate together as we move out of the pandemic and just, yeah, modern day, if you will. So teen suicide is the leading cause of death for teenagers, and boys are four times more likely, right? So I know you guys have a nomination process, but I'm curious, is there adequate representation of boys within those forty, group of forty? And how do you go after that?
Our vice president is a guy. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today, but we do have an equal amount of, we're gaining more guys as this program starts to expand in our school, but we aren't having lots of like male and female representatives on this platform.
Can we talk about that? How, guys, it's not easy to talk about our feelings. And so our, our vice president, Abdulow, is a wrestler, you know, in our school. He's a great guy. He's, he's committed to some other stuff today, but yeah, so we, we do, we are aware of that and make sure we try to have the students on our team representing everybody.
Good, good.
The nomination process, like, it actually allows for so much diversity, not, not just, you know, culturally, but also in who, who our groups of students are, because they're nominating each other, so we have students across all spectrums. It's, that's what's beautiful about the development of the nomination process.
Very good. And then I know we've, we've talked about it just in terms of, from a HIPAA standpoint, imminent harm tends, is one of those areas that isn't as gray, right? So if you're a mandatory reporter and it's imminent harm, you have to report it. And Cara knew the right thing to do in that situation, but is that something that you guys talk a lot about, that whenever this is an issue, it's imminent harm, and there is a reporting requirement, I'm assuming, related to this, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, very good.
That's something that we've worked out, and honestly, it's been helpful to have the mental health background and knowledge paired with the, the teaching and administrative support. So we were really careful to walk through what is the process for our students. It can't even be after hours that students are reaching out to teachers, right? We have to use the systems that are in place so that we know there's immediate response and immediate awareness. And so that's, this example is exactly what Hope Squad is. It's less of them digging into concerns with the student and more of, I was trained that this is a concerning statement, I need to contact an adult right away, or an okay to say.
Thank you. Ms. Tilly?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I know we've talked about at the table before my BI data, this is one of the reasons why it's so important, because this helps as another way to identify students that are having suicidal thoughts and that need assistance. I think this is a great program and a great model for our state of how we help our students in these situations. And I wanted to know from you or your staff, I know with COVID, the numbers went up of suicidal cases. How are we, do we know the statewide MI-FI data? Or are the rates going back down now? Or are they the same? Or are they going higher?
We are going to be presenting a little bit on Goal Three data in the next presentation in just a few minutes, but, but there is no indication that we're, we're dropping off at this point. I think the pandemic was difficult. I think we're still addressing some of the pandemic-related mental health challenges that people have, in addition to what predated the pandemic.
And I want to thank the students for your work. This is so important. I've definitely had familiar experiences with this. This is not easy, and this is something big, especially for young people. It's big, it's big when it's, and it's heavy for adults to deal with, let alone young people. So you're saving lives, and that is absolutely amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. McMillan?
Thanks for your work. I was wondering, do you ever run into students that it might be better for them to kind of pull back? I don't know if they're overwhelmed at school or with bullying or issues at school, that they pull back and kind of be away from school for a while for their mental health benefit? And, and just kind of take a time out for a little while? Have you ever seen that?
I, I tutored students over the summer through, like, forgetting, like, NHS hours, and I worked with students in math, and one of them was talking to me, and like, once we, like, I just met them that same day. But like, as the day progressed, like, they started opening up to me about stuff. So they said firstly, like, they started getting overwhelmed by school. So they, like, missed a couple of months, so that's why they, like, failed the class, because by the time they got back, they didn't have, like, enough time to, like, actually catch up on it. So I have seen those instances within some of my peers, I would say.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say that I've also seen that happen. I have a friend who struggled with their mental health a year or two ago, and they had to take, like, a month or so off of school. And I think that we're really good at accommodating that within, like, the schools, like, giving them time to work on the things that they missed and helping them catch up with things like tutoring.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to that just briefly, too. We do see students stepping aside, especially as we see anxiety increasing. That's where the, my work, the mental health work, has really come into play as we're talking to our system about how do we, how do we tweak some things culturally? How do we help nervous systems that are just so heightened right now? And it's not just because of our education system, but the way, to your point, that our society is functioning right now and that brain structure post-pandemic. So if you look at the neuropsychology of what's happening in our brains, then we know there's such an increase in heightened nervous systems and anxiety. And so we are seeing those numbers increased, and we talk in Howell a lot about what do we do culturally to help bring those nervous systems to a safe place psychologically so that students aren't coming with such heightened anxiety and then missing because they can't handle the stress load. And Mr. Shrock, our administrator, has been amazing at allowing students to share what is it, you know? And so they talk about the pressures of university, the pressures of academics, and being involved in sports, the pressures of my peers and social media. So, so Hope Squad was one answer to looking at the cultural, safe, psychological safety for our students.
Thank you. We're going to have to move a little bit more quickly. Mr. Bullock, Ms. Lipton, and, and we're pivoting.
Quickly, I know I think to all you guys, but I did have a couple of questions. Like, in the training, who actually does the training?
So tangibly, Mr. Shrock and I, and some of our teachers.
There's a curriculum with that, right? So.
Lessons, you could say?
Yeah. So in train, so we teach these things about recognizing and acknowledging certain cues, nonverbal or verbal.
Sure.
Are we also teaching about those cues, about those individuals who maybe think empowering themselves or others in those instances to be proactive and maybe recognizing some unfortunate?
Yeah, yeah. First lesson of the school year is QPR.
Yeah.
Question, persuade, refer. That's our number, that's kind of our, our, our standard, our best practice, to be honest.
Which is an evidence-based suicide prevention model.
So I think that answers your question. Like, that's so our, our first thing we want to do in our first meeting that we meet once a month is be QPR-trained, and you can actually, there's a site that we go to and all the students have to go on, and it's kind of almost going like through safe schools for us teachers, you know? But it's, it's a QPR-training, and then we do a lesson on QPR.
All right, so you answered the other, the last question was like, do you guys meet monthly, biweekly to stay up?
Honestly, it's what's best for your, for your community and your school. I don't, there's not a, a written law that says anything. It's what, what fits for you guys. And this isn't, you know, the end-all, be-all, you know, please, you know, it's, don't think this is the, this is it, this is another tool that we can use for the mouth. So that's why it's just make it work for you and your, in your school system, community, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Lipton, I think, had her questions responded to Mr. Bullock by, by your questions. Young people, you're doing great work. Thank you so much for your leadership. Staff members, you're doing terrific work as well. We appreciate you. You're saving lives, and you're doing it in, in some cases with community, in some cases with perhaps a little bit of resistance in community, because everybody doesn't believe that we should work with children's mental health in schools. They think that we should be about reading, writing, and mathematics, and that's it. If you, if you don't address children's mental health, it's hard to get much done with, with some children who are, who are really struggling. So we appreciate you acknowledging that and, and leaning into and supporting young people who, who are struggling at any given moment. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on today's agenda is a presentation on Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan, Goal Three, to Improve the Health, Safety, and Wellness of All Learners. We welcome our presenters, backed by popular demand, Dr. Diane Golzinski, Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Finance and Operations, and Mr. Scott Hutchins, Manager in the Office of Health and Nutrition Services. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Happy World Mental Health Day. It's wonderful to be with you. Diane Golzinski, Deputy Superintendent, as Dr. Rice just said. Today is our update on Goal Three, Improve the Health, Safety, and Wellness of All Learners. You may remember that we were here at the table with you in February, giving you an update to a number of the metrics. Today, we have an update to a few more of the metrics, and so that's what we will focus on this morning. And then we will get into a description of the work that we're doing around creating a comprehensive behavioral health system within schools. So the Annie E. Casey Foundation releases an overall child well-being national rank, and in the last two years, we have remained steady in that rank. Our average daily student participation in school breakfast programs did go down from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, primarily because of the loss of that USDA waiver, which allowed for all meals to continue to be served for free, which meant in the last school year, families had to pay for their meals again, and so we lost sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three breakfasts every single day. And then with our Section Thirty-One N funding out of the State School Aid Act, there is a portion focused specifically on direct services to students. So we were able to increase the number of students served by seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-three. Now Scott's going to get us started, talking about the comprehensive school mental health system.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. As Diane said, I'm Scott Hutchins, Supervisor of the School Behavioral Health Unit here at the Department of Education, and wanted to talk to you about what are we doing collectively to strengthen youth mental health? And, and start off by the why. As we know, mental health issues impact every community, urban, suburban, rural, east, west, north, and south. There are no geographic boundaries, there are no party political lines, and one of our most important responsibilities is protecting the health and well-being of our state's children. Student, mental health challenges are creating a public health crisis that threatens the livelihood and well-being of our future gener, generation, and therefore requires us to be consistent in how we are treating these issues across the board in our schools. So with a focus on a comprehensive school mental health system, and I just want to commend our amazing partners that just got finished talking about the Hope Squad, we're seeing what's happening right here in schools when we do things like this. So by providing those health services in schools, we're increasing access by removing barriers to treatment. Schools can normalize the process of seeking behavioral health care. Again, go back to the experiences that we just learned about. They're implementing those school-wide interventions to ensure safe and welcoming environments. In schools that have strong relationships with their community, I heard some questions asking about that earlier, that's an opportunity, again, for schools to direct students and their families to those services that aren't available, or there's resources that they don't already have within the schools. They can make those warm handoffs and work with their community to make sure that the whole needs are being met of each individual child and their families. So when we think about, there was a great question earlier about some of the statistics. We don't currently have post-COVID data. We won't probably see that until the 2025 Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth. But we do have some data from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey from 2021. As you can see here, thirty-one and a half percent of Michigan high school students reported that their mental health was not good most of the time or al, always. And prior to the pandemic, again, this was prior, nearly twenty percent or one in five Michigan youth had been diagnosed with depression, anxiety, and/or ADHD. We know that those numbers have only been exacerbated post-pandemic. Again, going back to the YRBS, Youth Risk Behavior Survey from 2021, as you can see here, over forty percent of Michigan youth reported feeling sad or hopeless every day for a two-week period in a way that impacted their usual activities. Any average suicide death rate among adolescents and young adults increased from six point seven to eleven point four persons per one hundred thousand in Michigan from 2009 to 2018. So when we look at the core features of a comprehensive school mental health system, what we did is we, at the State of Michigan, Department of Education, we, again, with this unprecedented funding from our legislators, from the governor's office, we knew that it was kind of an audition, if you will. Tremendous amount of funding, tremendous amount of support to add more services in schools. What can we do to be good stewards of those funds? How can we have the biggest investment and show the legislators, show the governor's office that investment was worth it and that we're making a significant difference? So what we did is we researched what was already taking place within the state, we looked at what other states were doing, and we found from the National Center for School Mental Health, there are eight core features of a comprehensive school mental health system. And our goal is to look at each one of these eight core features individually and really break them down into plain language. So at all schools, regardless of where they're at, what do we mean when we say well-trained educators and specialized instructional support personnel? What do we mean by data? Funding is there, right? It's not the complete solution, but it's part of the solution. And how do we braid? And how do we braid funds? So we heard, again, from our friends, talked earlier, they've put great examples of how you braid funds with 31N and 31AA. So we want to come up with a guidebook or a playbook, if you, if you will, from the Department of Ed, for our schools, for our intermediate school districts, and their community partners to work together to really come up with a comprehensive solution.
So these eight features are not independent of each other. They are all interdependent and work together. No one can be looked at individually. The first one that we will look at today is the Needs Assessment and Resource Mapping. This is really taking a comprehensive view of what resources and services are already in place within a school district. What's missing? How can we avoid duplication of services? How can we make informed decisions? What we did here at the department was create the first-ever School Behavioral Health Unit within the Office of Health and Nutrition Services. Because the funding in the State School Aid Act in 2018 was the very first time mental health had ever been funded in that State School Aid Act, we had not had staff dedicated to that work. So now we have an entire unit with Scott as the supervisor.
Next one we want to look at is the well-trained educators and specialized instructional support personnel. What we mean by that is equipping school staff to support the behavioral health needs of students. Notice here the phrase "school staff." Who does that include? We want it to include everyone, right? From the first person that that child sees every morning, if it's a bus driver or a cafeteria employee, to the classroom, superintendent, principal, whoever happens to be walking in the halls, but all adults. And what type of staff support do we need? What type of training are we looking for? So you heard them earlier talk about, one of the examples that are on here, our list includes that question, persuade, refer. But what we did is we came up with a, this is not an exhaustive list, but it is a comprehensive list of a lot of the resources that are already available within the state already. So my, in my prior position before taking on this manager role, I was a consultant, myself and two other consultants, we provide virtual trainings every other month. So one month, we work directly with our direct service providers that are working in schools, and then the other month, we work with their directors, their coordinators, and we talk about, we provide new learning, and we give them opportunities to collaborate and learn with and from each other. We also provide that technical assistance and support. Michigan State Police Officer School Safety has recently done statewide behavioral throughout assessment and management training throughout the state. And again, you can see here several other examples, several links that you can also go to if you'd like more information on some of those free or low-cost training resources.
When we look at family, school, and community collaboration, it's really about working with those partners and seeing how we can expand this work across all sectors. So we work very closely with our partners at the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Labor and Economic Opportunity Department, which is known as LEO, the Michigan Health Council, various educational professional organizations, and a group called OPTIMIZE, which stands for Opening the Pipeline of Talent into Michigan Special Education, as well as our ISDs and our LEAs. We've been partnering with Region 8 Comprehensive Study, Comprehensive Center to develop a feasibility study to help us develop those appropriate structures and guidance for, for schools to have the capacity to do this work sustainably. We've partnered with the Education Commission of the States to examine the current landscape of the work in Michigan that's happening. We have a partnership with Council of the Chief State School Officers, known as CCSSO, for a community of practice that focuses on student and staff well-being. The Michigan Health Information Network is a project co-founded, co-funded by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, dedicated to connecting school-based behavioral health providers with access to electronic health records of students for whom they have that active care relationship. And finally, we've been working with the MDHHS Bureau of Children's Coordinated Health Policy and Supports, otherwise known as BCHIP, to focus on identifying ways that we can better meet youth mental health needs earlier with our partnerships in schools. We've also known that there is a great need to focus on the workforce. As Dr. Rice likes to say, we cannot go to Home Depot or Lowe's and pick up a social worker or a psychologist to hire within schools. They just don't exist. So we need to really focus on building and strengthening the workforce. We could almost look at the Hope Squad as a informal grow-your-own for helping professionals because those students are really getting some great experience there. We have the My Coach opportunity, which is federal funding to help us train 240 high school students in 10 different school districts over the course of three years. MYELSS is Michigan Earn, Learn, and Serve in Schools, which is also federal funding to expand the number of school-based mental health providers working in high-need Michigan schools. That pays stipends to both interns and their supervisors. And MY Kids Now is a state response to the lawsuit that indicated the state hasn't done enough to provide mental health coverage for Medicaid-eligible students. There is now both a student loan repayment program as well as a paid internship program through that response.
Actually, we want to look at Multi-Tiered System of Support, or MTSS. What we mean by that is ensuring that each student can access the full array of services. So when you think about what options are available, Michigan does have a multi-tiered system of support technical assistance center, known as the MYMTSS that's available. And just to kind of level set where we're at, so when we think of Tier 1, that's, again, those universal activities. Tier 2, more early intervention services and supports, and then Tier 3 is more of that targeted or individualized treatment services and supports. The key here, though, is addressing those gaps and making sure that disparities or gaps in the way in which students access services, we need to understand that that can intensify challenges and increase the frequency of mental health issues when all students don't have access to the full array of available services. So this is an example of some of the current school mental health system resources. As you can see here, we actually took that MTSS structure and we actually broke it out into, added a fourth, and that's actually crisis programs. But we, you see here, multiple universal programs, everything from classroom lessons on mental health, staff education on mental health, move to targeted programs, that's where we get into more of the group mental health therapy that's available, mental health supports for special populations. Moving to Tier 3, that more intensive programming, talked earlier, we learned about the 31N-funded providers, how they're able to provide therapy directly in schools. And then we go to Tier 4, that more crisis program. Critical incident response, again, we heard from our amazing friends earlier, how one young lady was able to get her friend the support and the help they needed because of that crisis response and because of their training that they had, which is just amazing.
Next, we'll look at mental health screening. It's important to recognize that early identification and early intervention are our best ways to address profound mental health challenges rather than letting them to fester and for children to be harmed. This is a starting point to identify students that may need extra help. It must be safe, it must be authentic, and it must be reliable. It helps to identify who, but not what. And it should only be conducted when there are systems in place to connect students to support, to the support and services that are needed. It should never be done only to then turn around and say to a student, we can't help you.
Next, we're going to look at evidence-based and emerging best practices, or resources that are based on strength and needs. So Diane mentioned earlier some of the different things. One of them includes the Region 8 Comprehensive Center that we're working with. Region 8 includes Michigan, Indiana, and Ohio. They conducted a feasibility study for us here in Michigan and are very close to publishing those reports later this fall. We'll talk about what is the feasibility of developing and actually having a comprehensive school mental health system throughout the state of Michigan. That's what that feasibility study will share with us. We have a platform called BH Works, which is a care platform for all of our school-based providers that are delivering those comprehensive services in schools. It helps them get consent, track progress of students, monitor how they're doing, and get that data immediately. We also have other options, but the key thing to remember, considerations before implementation, what's the current workforce? What are the capacity of the current people that are working? What is the cost? And of course, what's the organizational infrastructure to make sure you can see it from start to finish?
Next, we look at the data available to us. So you've heard about the MI-FI data, that's the Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth and the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey is a national survey that is standardized at the national level. MI-FI is the Michigan version of that, and it happens in the opposite years of YRBS. We also have our 31N legislative reports available for each year that we've had that funding. We also have different sys, or it's important to recognize that our systems routinely face barriers to tracking individual student data, whether it be the lack of staffing capacity to track that data, the lack of technology infrastructure. What we had when we first started this work is Scott would get calls from some of our social workers who were putting their care notes into a Google Doc rather than into a secure system. And so we now have that secure system with BH Works, but we're continuing to try to get over some of the technology infrastructure challenges that happen at the local level. There's also a lack of knowledge and training in collecting the data and having an appropriate system and limited time to, to do that work. So we know that we would rather have these providers spending time with kids than doing paperwork. We'd rather have them spending time with kids than just tracking numbers and data so that we can report it out. So that's part of the challenge that we look at. What BH Works does for us is it helps us to get at least some of the numbers without those providers having to do anything extra. By having those providers in that secure system, they have the ability to let us know that they are seeing kids who, with anxiety and anxious feelings, more than anyone else. And the, the different reasons that kids are getting referred to providers are all shared here on the screen. What we can also see from BH Works in real time are the numbers and types of referrals, and if there's a waiting list for some reason for students waiting to get referrals. We have a plan for addressing those, those needs of the students once we can look at our data in this type of setting. And what we know from these data is that students are getting to that help faster as a result of, of the work that we have done over the past four years.
Next, we want to share some highlights, some things that we're really excited about. So funding, again, talked earlier about the importance of, of being good recipients or good stewards of these funds and really this audition that we have because of this amazing support from the legislators, from the governor's office. So we have recurring funds, 31N-5, 31N-6, and 31N-10. You've heard about some of the impact. Some of the non-recurring funds that we've recently seen include 31O, which is, again, funding for adding more helping professionals, more school social workers, school counselors, school psychologists or school counselors. 31P was funding for trails. 31AA started off last year as funding that could only be used for improving or maintaining the mental health of students and staff. This year, the allocation does allow also funding for school safety. But what they did is they took two different sections, 31AA, which was dedicated for mental health, and Section 97, which was dedicated for school safety, they combined them and they doubled the pot. So now instead of 150 million separately, it's 300 million that can be used for either or. And the expectation is that at least 50% will be used for mental health when it comes to 31AA. For night, for, excuse me, for 31FF, those are funds to provide stipends to helping professionals. So Diane mentioned earlier, a lot of the different efforts that we're doing to grow the workforce. We know that one of the unintended consequences of these funds for adding more health professionals in schools is we have taken them out of important positions in community mental health, in child and adolescent health centers, and hospitals, et cetera. So we're working with our partners, as Diane mentioned earlier, to make sure that we're looking at a workforce development solution for all of Michigan. 31, or excuse me, 97E and 97F. Briefly, 97E is funding for the School Safety and Mental Health Commission, and 97F is a program, $15 million for Michigan State, called Prevent to Protect. You can see here, again, we started with fiscal, fiscal year 18, no money in recurring or non-recurring, all the way up to $343 million just dedicated for school mental health funding, which is amazing. So what are some of the results of that? We've seen a dramatic increase in our number of providers in schools. With 31N and 31O funds, schools across Michigan have added over 1,000 helping professionals to provide services to students directly in schools since fiscal year 19. I'm going to say that again, over 1,000 helping professionals have been added. We're extremely excited about that. But again, we also know we can't forget where they came from. As Diane mentioned, we didn't just go to Lowe's or Home Depot and get brand-new folks off the shelf. Unfortunately, we took them from some of our partners that we know need them, and so we're working with them to come up with solutions. So, kind of concluding here, but what are some of those positive outcomes that we can expect when schools implement all eight core features? So you see here, everything from back at, excuse me, better academic outcomes, access to care, we talked about removing those barriers, that early identification and intervention, positive school climate and safety, youth, family, educator, peer engagement, a continuum of services, and better cycle social outcomes for our students. We appreciate your time, and we're now happy to answer any questions.
We appreciate your presentation. Thank you so much. Board members, your reflections. Mr. McMillan, Dr. Pugh.
So, how do you, how is it, how do we make sure that school efforts in this area don't step on or harm already family-provided support? So family's doing, has a therapist or is working with the child, and all of a sudden, school comes in and kind of overwhelms or says, no, this is what we need. I mean, there's conflict. I mean, how do, how do we make sure that there's not a, yeah, that there's not something that's confusing the situation or maybe even harming the situation? This is the direction the child's going, this was the best, but now something stepped in from the school.
Sure. So when it comes to 31N funds, there's a requirement within 31N funding that any service that's provided within the school, that the qualified provider seeks Medicaid reimbursement for that. So that qualifies under what we call school-based services. Part of a Medicaid requirement requires coordination with the child's primary care provider. So what you're talking about right there, that's met because, again, there's a requirement that you coordinate services with that primary care provider. So that's one piece when it's a Medicaid school-based service. Another thing we do, we talked about the needs assessment. So schools, again, that are working with their communities and they know what's already taking place, so if there's a child in an adolescent health center in the same building, or if there's a community mental health agency, for example, where I'm from in Jackson County, they have a great partnership with Lifeways. Lifeways actually con, is contracted with the school to come in and provide the service. So they are already, again, are aware of what's going on within the community and the school both.
I think it's important to recognize, too, that no child can be seen within the school system without parental consent. Is that, that's accurate?
Is that accurate?
Under the age of 14.
Right.
A 14 to 18-year-old can consent to their own.
Consent. So what about those situations where the child is 15 and consenting to something that is directly opposed or not opposed, but would confuse the current path that the family has them on?
Can you give me an example? I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
The therapist is working with them in certain areas, and all of a sudden, another, you know, they, the child consents to going to some other therapist that has a totally different take on what the child needs, or, I don't know, I don't know if it's medications or skills or, I don't know.
So the school-based services are going to be different than what that community-based provide, I mean, a school-based provider, for example, cannot prescribe medication. That would be without or beyond their scope of practice that they're taking place. So again, if you've got an individual student who's 14, 18, who's consented for their own services, they have the right to do that. Michigan Mental Health Code does allow that to take place. But again, the expectation is whenever possible, they're going to coordinate other services, but if that child has asked not to, they still have a responsibility and obligation per their own scope of practice, through their own responsibility. per their own scope of practice, through their own responsibilities, to do no harm. Right? So they can't do anything that's going to contradict intentionally something that's taking place. And if you-- we talked, I think one of you mentioned earlier about the HIPAA requirement. Actually, Nick, it was you, Ms. Snyder, talked about that requirement. If it does get up to a situation where there's harm, then they have a responsibility and obligation to report that if the child's in danger.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, this is a very inexact science, you know, dealing with mental health. There's all kinds of different philosophies and strategies that sometimes are diametrically opposed to each other. And so I just, what you just explained there, where the child can consent to something that-- you know, and therapists are too busy. I mean, they probably can't return calls and coordinate very easily. So again, you've got somebody that's coordinating, or the child thinks is what's doing best, and the parent thinks that somebody else is doing what's best. And I just, I think that it sounds nice on paper. I don't think that actually it works that way in practice, and it sounds like it could result in harm in some instances. And I don't know. And now, what if there's disagreements? You're saying if there's disagreements with support and the direction that the parent can decide or only if their child is under 14? My child doesn't need this support. This is the-- we've gone down this road. This is actually, we've decided, you know, the therapist says this is attention-seeking or is not, you know, we disagree with these kind of pronouns or whatever it is. We don't want-- this is not something we agree with or we think is best for the child right now. But the school's referral does think that this is best for the child. Who wins out if they're under 14 or if they're over 14?
Did you want to address that? I mean, again, you've got the Michigan Mental Health Code. So regardless of where the services take place, whether they take place within the school or within the community, a provider is required to follow the Mental Health Code, the Michigan Mental Health Code. So again, a child between the ages of 14 to 18 can ask for services in the community. They can ask for them, again, at a child mental health center, a hospital, wherever it happens to be, or they can ask for them in school. In Michigan, law permits them to ask for those services.
Okay. Wasn't satisfactory, but I'll move on because I know time is of the essence. This universal screening, this is mental health universal screening?
No, not necessarily. There's several things you can screen for. One of them could be if you wanted to, again, identify if a student was struggling with anxious feelings. But other things could be culture and climate regarding students, how they feel about school. Do they feel safe at school, things like that?
Okay, I just, I saw on number 21, page 11, it just said, "Universal screening is a starting point to identify students." Universal to me means everyone, and it means some kind of a-- so I mean, is there, is this something that's going on right now? Or is it desire to screen every child? And is there, are there--
There are some schools that are doing that, yes.
There are opt-outs?
Absolutely.
That parents can say this is not--
And again, they can screen for different things. It doesn't have to be automatically a mental health screening. They may do it, like you said, universally, they may say, "All fifth graders." We want to see, do all fifth graders feel safe at school?
All right. I mean, I've seen these questions, "Do you feel safe with your parents?" And they may not like, you know, the idea of inserting the idea that maybe, maybe I ought to start judging my parents more. I don't know. I mean, maybe there's, it just, there can be issues. I just am curious about these. I doubt that parents can see these questions and the screening. So there's some concerns there. And then finally, you mentioned that there were barriers to systematically tracking individual student data. And I didn't hear a lot about what you were talking about. What, I mean, what's the desire to systematically track individual student data? Is this in SEPI? Is this in some database? There's always concern that some kid gets tagged when they're in fifth grade and it goes with them. And I've seen Stanford studies talking about this as well, or professors and others, saying that these tracking of individual data, and there's HIPAA issues obviously as well. What is the desire in tracking individually students?
Goes back to one of your earlier questions, Ms. McMillan, about coordinating services. So making sure that that school-based provider, again, is coordinating services with the child's primary care provider or if they have an outsider provider. So how are we breaking down some of those barriers so that a school-based provider that has an active care relationship with a child has access to some of that other data, with the right permissions, of course?
And where is that data located?
Currently, there's the Michigan Health Information Network, or MYHIN. And they have, like that's, for example, all of us, when we go to doctor's office, we can sign off and say, you know, I want my wife or my spouse to have permission or leave a message at so-and-so. Or if we have a child that's under the age of 18, again, we can sign off on permissions. We're working with the Michigan Health Information Network to figure out a way to get our school-based providers possibly connected to that, but we're not there yet.
And parents would sign something saying, "I realize that this is going to go into some database with my, for my kid and track them for the rest of their lives," or that the parent will know that if they're signing this, you can--
Right, just, yeah, just like we--
All the ramifications.
Just like we do now as parents when we have the right to go into our, you know, child's primary care physician, right, pediatrician's office, and we sign off on those documents. Yep.
All right, call me skeptical. Doubt it.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Dr. Pugh.
Let me see, where do I start? First of all, you know, it has been great to talk about the 30 million increase. Well, zero to 30 million to a third of a billion, as Dr. Rice often says. It's been really good to lift and raise that point up. And so kudos to the department, to you, Dr. Rice, and for the board for advocating for that as well as the legislature and the governor for moving those budgets forward. Also, it is always good across the country to talk about this goal that we have and the fact that we are monitoring health and really not only talk about it, but are really looking at and addressing the upstream factors that drive the outcomes of our children and their health and academic performance. So just a couple of questions that I have. Talking about the coordination at the individual level, that's one thing. And there seems to be a handle on that. There's a professionalism that we have to always lean to, you know, that these are professionals, these are experts, these are the people that have gone through great lengths to know how to address the needs of our children. And we always monitor that as parents, as community. So thank you for those explanations as well. From the population health side, and I'm gathering this, is that there is coordination there, too. There were some questions from the previous presentation that it sounds like we're at the right tables. I know often, our educators are not always able to get to those tables where these discussions are happening because they're so stretched thin. And we need to make sure that any grantees or anyone that we're working with, that we try to make sure that that coordination is happening. So there's community health improvement planning. There's IRS dollars that are tied to community benefits. So those tables are there where physical health, mental health, education, everyone is like at a table in a community and should be. And we need our educators who are doing this work to show up at those tables. So however, we help to support that and encourage that. I think that that is critical, and that goes back to the question that you asked, Ellen. The other piece that I wanted to bring up, kind of in the last presentation, but here as well, that if we could support our students who are doing this work, this very critical mental health work, that they have the opportunity for reflective supervision. From the previous presentation, I picked up that that's happening, but that we always make sure that students who are carrying these loads, that they're able to dump and think about and reflect on what they've done and how they can make sure that they're doing it better, but also that they are taking care of themselves, especially young people. As I look at the data that we look at, I'm also wondering if we look at the BRFFS data, the adult behavioral risk factor data, because that has some pieces around family and family health needs. So that's a thought that came to mind around the mental health work. Now pivoting to, because we kind of talked about, we kind of talked about the health, and I think we've talked a little bit about overall well-being and maybe nutrition a little bit. If not, I'm just going to put it here. But I did a tour, and I was talking to Dr. Rice about this. And one of the questions, as we're talking about money and nutrition, there-- it was brought to my attention, I don't know, from a credible source, so just wanting to explore a little bit more about the money as it relates to ag dollars that we may not be utilizing and may be needed in the community. And so that was brought up and about the coordination with the Department of Ag and Rural Development to ensure, to better ensure that we're not leaving any dollars on the table as it relates to nutrition. And, you know, thank God for the dollars that we have as it relates to feeding all children, but just making sure that children at home are also able to have access to those dollars and that we're coordinating best with the right entities to ensure that. And then also, the, what is the term that's used? The, it's not communal, but there, during COVID, we were able to--
Congregate.
Thank you, congregate. The other C-word, yes. Congregate feeding and making sure that we're addressing and hopefully able to push to have that requirement eased permanently. And so those were some of the thoughts. So making sure that children are fed at school, but also that we are using the resources best, coordinating best, and looking at policy to ensure that our children are also eating at home. So those are just thoughts and questions I had.
Do you want to take an initial run at those now and maybe a subsequent run at them next month?
I'd be happy to. I can tell you that we have a wonderful partnership with MDDAR, the Department of Ag and Rural Development. We've also, as a department, brought in, I will double-check the numbers. I want to say it's around $30 million to partner with local communities to get local products from disadvantaged farmers sourced into different school-community settings to get those products to homes to support that work. So we can definitely give you a better update on that.
And we hope to be able to have a full presentation on universal meals and feeding next month.
Awesome. Anything on the congregate settings?
Well, the congregate settings, you know, we were able to push back and get a waiver associated with congregate feeding of children. At the end of the pandemic, March to June of 2020 with Dr. Golzinski's leadership, and then 2021 and 2122, we attempted to get it in 2223. Were not able to get it. Were not able to get universal meals from the feds that year either. The meals dropped. That actually served as an interesting combination. The availability of universal meals in 2021 and 2122, the absence thereof in 2223, it ended up serving as a combined audition for universal meals for 2324 funded in the state budget. So in the absence of that combination, I don't think we would have universal meals in this state, or for that matter, in the handful of other states that have universal meals. It took a pandemic, the provision of dollars, and then the pulling back of those dollars to indicate how important those dollars were across the state. Mr. Bullock, Ms. Snyder.
Quick question is, and I probably wanted to pose this to the Hope Squad Group, too, is probably for you, Ms. Snyder, with the Behavior Wellness Unit, are there strategies in place or is each district to come up with their own strategies and how to best protect the child at school from being labeled by seeing the therapist, by seeing, is the therapist going to the room and calling? Now everybody knows you're going to see the therapist. Or, and even in the Hope Squad, you know, somebody's identified and addressed at school. Does that become suicide boy or girl? You know, the labeling and all those inappropriate behaviors that go with it as we are-- you know, we have some thoughtful kids here, but we have some very non-thoughtful peers. Some think they're comedians, but it penetrates that person's self-esteem.
Yeah, so I mentioned earlier that we do a bimonthly training. Like I said, one month is with the providers, the other month is coordinator's directors. I love where you're going with that. I will take that back to that group, because what we do is, a lot of times, we'll do breakout rooms, and we'll give them guiding questions. And one of the things I'm going to ask them to talk about in their small groups is, what are you doing to protect the confidentiality of each child? Again, we don't have a holistic solution from the state of Michigan, but the expectation, obviously, is there. But I love putting that back in their forefront. So I definitely, at next month's training, I'm going to ask them to talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Ms. Snyder, Ms. Tilly.
Just to revisit the reporting requirement, just because I think it's important to consider that. And I know that's something the Senate, the Senate is actually discussing right now as it relates to defining gross negligence and such. But schools are involved in that, right? It's not just parents or it's just anybody who is associated with the mental health of that student, and it's in the bill. So just good to remember that. But just to kind of piggyback on some of the things that Tom was saying, I do think that we've talked about at great length at this table for the last several years, the ways in which we're stepping on toes, if you will, or crossing, you know, not just cultural but constitutional boundaries that relate to mental health. Because in the universal programs, we've talked about social-emotional learning, school culture initiatives, hold-child initiatives, all sound good and in some ways can be. But then, at the same time, if you're going against a parent's wish or what they might do in place of the schools in response to an issue, that is a problem. And when you've got a child that's 14 years old that can make their own decision according to the, you know, mental health laws in our state, you have to start to consider, okay, well, then you're responsible for what happens when parents don't know what's going on with their child. So that's significant. And I've talked a lot about at the board table, the idea of faith-based services shouldn't be happening in public education, and therefore, the responsibility of the parents should be respected and the rights that they have should be respected. There are a lot of meta-analysis through PubMed, NIH, that we have on the importance of faith-based services within mental health, that they go hand in hand. Yet if you look at, you know, intensive programs that you guys have within your MTSS, and I have extensive experience with this as well, there are very few, if any, faith-based services that we offer students. So when you say, "Connect to the support and services that are needed," and you're in charge of identifying what those support and services that are needed to a 14-year-old child and up through 18 years of age, and then you give them those services, there's no doubt in my mind that this MTSS system is not actually honoring the rights of parents, but also the actual needs of students. When we know that the research is behind the importance of faith-based services in mental health going hand in hand for many people. In one of the articles that I've read, it talks about it. It is life-sustaining for many students. So, you know, when I look at the concept of universal programming, a lot of the universal programming is actually funded through federal dollars, where we see highly politicized dollars and policies funnel back down to our schools through our department. We saw that when we had teachers being encouraged to keep and withhold identification of, you know, students from parents as it related to gender pronouns and names. Then we see targeted programs. That's not as significant as intensive programs offering these services that are faith-based. I just think you need to unpack all of these different areas that you're talking about and really ask yourself the question of, am I truly doing what this student needs? Am I truly honoring parents' rights?
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Tilly? Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Tilly?
I just wanted more clarity, listening to the conversation about the data collection. Because from my experience, it's been anonymous, and I have, you know, dealt with the state data, but also hired an epidemiologist to do that data collection as well. So the data that we've retrieved, as well as, from my understanding, the state data does not follow the student, it's, it's anonymous, it's not a part of their record.
The survey data is every other year, Youth Risk Behavior Survey, MIFI, Youth Risk Behavior Survey, MIFI. It is aggregated data, it is anonymous.
Correct.
It is not linked to any individual trial.
That's correct.
That respond to your question?
Yes. I know it's, and, and it's statistical, so you will see where, how many boys or girls and the grades they're in, so.
You will, and you will begin to see trends like our Hope Squad youngsters talked about and raised, in fact, by Ms. Snyder, about the greater prevalence of, of suicide in, in males than in, than in females. You'll begin to see that in the data.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Lipton.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and I just would like to commend the department and also just highlight the fact that we have elevated this to a school behavioral unit, because I do think that, just like we're very concerned about nourishing through food, a child's body so that they can come to school ready to learn, I do think that we as a state can be a leader in recognizing the nourishment of a child's mental health state as a direct indicator of their ability to learn and be successful in school, because that is in fact what I think and hope that we are all spending a lot of time working on. And just to highlight the slide on page 1428, where you talk about positive student outcomes when schools implement all eight core features. Again, having really looked intently at the full-service community school model, that is in fact considered a best practice, where we know that when we're concerned about the student's mental and physical health, we do see better outcomes, not just academically, but in terms of school climate, which again, all goes toward creating positive environments so that our students can be most successful. Just very, very, I just want to make sure I understand, on page number nine, slide 17, where you talk about coordinating resources and strategies, and the last bullet point talks about collaborative partnerships to increase number of behavioral health providers. And I will note that, I think that our data in Michigan is trending in the right direction, clearly. We have seen positive increase. My question is, do we have a sense of what the gap in, what we would consider to be at, at, at full staffing for school-based mental health? And maybe you don't know, but I'm just curious to know, do we have a sense of where we want to be so that we can use programs like Grow Your Own? We now have in Michigan, the Michigan Achievement Scholarship, where we have the ability to pay for two years of community college. So do we know if any of those community college certifications are enough to help fill the gap? I, I'm just curious to know, do we know what the gap is and about how long it might take, in theory, if everything goes well?
We're, we're starting to have those conversations, so do we know the answer right now? No. But we're asking the right questions. So Diane talked about, you know, the different partners, the Michigan Health Council, Labor and Economic Opportunity, the National Association for School Social Workers, the Michigan Association of Schools, right? So getting all of those partners at the table to have those critical conversations. So the questions are starting to be asked, and hopefully we'll start to have answers. We actually have also Department of Health and Human Services, so an inter-agency team that's also working at this. And one of the things that we've talked about is coming up with a solution to what is the data? Like, so one of the questions is, you know, we, we think that there are shortages.
Yeah.
Right? Is the shortage because we don't have enough helping professionals, or we have enough helping professionals, but they don't want to go to where the shortage areas are? For example, do they not want to go to the Upper Peninsula where they have to travel 150 miles-
Okay.
Twice a week, right? Or do they not want to go to an inner city because of their concerns there, or whatever it happens to be? So that's, those are some of the questions we're starting to ask and we don't have the answers to, but we're getting there.
And just, just as a follow-up, and this would just be an ask, might you contemplate some of these associate's degree preparation programs-
Absolutely.
-as part of the system? Because we do know now that we have funding for that, and a lot of students, when making the decisions, what they're going to study and what the prospects are after they get that two-year degree are really critical. I mean, it could very well be that the answer is no, we can't use those, but, but I suspect, at least now with listening to the Hope students, my guess is that there might be an associate's degree preparation that could find its way somewhere within this-
Leo, the Labor and Economic Opportunity, actually got a federal grant to develop a certificate program for high school students. So not even an associate's degree, to allow them to become community health, community health workers, which is awesome. And it's exactly what you're talking about. And it, and, and so the goal is to create a living wage for those individuals, right? But then also a pathway if they do want to take it to that next step, that associate's, that master, so no, you're right on track with that. And it's very cool to see. Like I said, I think it's taking place in Wayne Risa and a couple other high-need communities, I think three total, where we're, we're getting that direct path and they can come out of high school after attending their career center with a community health, worth, community health worker certification, which is really cool.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I, I, real quick, what about, what about the idea, because it's also talking about safety and mental health, of extricating kids? When I bring up Oxford, I mean, that boy was clearly, had very serious mental issues and should have been pulled out of the general population beforehand. Are there other, you know, what is being done? Are there, should resources maybe be directed in that direction of, how do we provide a separate location, more one-on-one, or more, a lower ratio for kids that, you know, are clearly, you know, need to be outside of the general population, or are on that edge? And we need to really start, you know, maybe that's an area that we need to really focus on as well, or maybe it is?
Yeah, so I mentioned earlier, and it's in the slide deck, so the Michigan State Police Officer School Safety is, has done a statewide behavioral threat assessment and management, or BTAM, or BTAM, training. That was, again, through a grant that they received. I don't know the exact numbers, Mr. McMillan, but there were several districts across the state that attended that training. And what they've done is they develop a trainer of trainers program so that that can continue, but it's exactly to identify what you're talking about. It's helping schools to figure out, it's a, it's a comprehensive training that involves school officials, law enforcement, you know, social work support, it's, it's in, it's in, a team that needs to work together.
And community mental health.
Thank you.
Exactly. I mean, is it with ISDs maybe that are, you know, can all 700 districts have a location where we're going to pull these kids out of, and there's probably not a lot, you know, relatively speaking, but, and so maybe it needs to be in a regional area, but where, you know, it's, it's clear? I mean, I can, I just imagine there's a lack of resources in that area as well. And so maybe some, I know that we're putting in resources for therapists, but I'm hearing that they're just not out there. I mean, it's going to take a while to develop that pipeline. In the meantime, can we maybe direct some of those resources towards locations? And, you know, how do you handle?
That's the other thing that, so 97-F, Prevent or Protect, so Michigan State, as I mentioned before, got $15 million for something that you're talking about. So yes, the, the discussions are starting to take place and there's funding to support it, which is great. We're just at the very early on stages of it, but where, where you're going, Mr. McMillan, is, is hopefully where we'll come up with something after we see what happens with it, is preventive for that program.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder, and then we're pivoting.
I believe you're talking about institutionalized services, correct? Something of that nature, yeah. Those were all shut down.
Not necessarily. They go there for the day, or, or that as well.
Those were all shut down, three governorships back. But, so yeah, it's going to be interesting to see how we reinstate that type of system, because it's certainly more compassionate and forward-thinking than what we're doing right now. So BTAM, how many school districts have not gone through that?
I, I don't have those numbers. Like I said, it was through the Michigan State Police Officer School Safety, not us at the Department of Ag.
Okay. I would think that, you know, again, within number four, which is the CRISI's programs, Critical Incident Response, Safety and Threat Assessment, in light of Oxford, that every school district should be going through that. It should be something that we're not unaware of in terms of who has received training on behavioral threat assessment and management. Oxford was our unfortunate reality that should say to us that schools shouldn't be without that training today.
Any other, any other questions or comments? On once, twice, thrice, just two slides, the first is on the funding. And I just want to lift up something that Mr. Hutchins said, which was that it isn't all about funding, but that it isn't all about funding doesn't mean that it isn't at all about funding. It is in part about funding, if only because you can't hire people, you can't pay people. And so I asked the board to look at that chart from bottom of page 13, and to note what Dr. Pugh noted, that we've gone from nothing in the State School Aid Act a half decade ago, to more than a third of a billion dollars for children's mental health today. But that three-quarters of those dollars are non-recurring dollars. So one of the things that we need to do is to make sure that a portion of those become recurring dollars moving forward, because our needs are going to recur. Our needs are not going to go away in the next year or, or two in this area. And to the issue of providers, on the next page, and Mr. Hutchins notes the, the thousand-person increase in helping professionals over the last few years, very powerful. It's not all about staff, but it's in part about staff. You can't do the work without staff. We're a people business, and helping professionals are by, by definition, human help, not inanimate help. There's a, there's an awful lot of emphasis on artificial these days. I prefer the organic, I prefer the, the human. And we're getting those additional professionals from a range of different places, from other states, and that will increase for a couple of reasons. One, our budgets have increased, so we're able to pay people more. Two, we've got counselor reciprocity, which our legislature has passed, which the governor has signed into law. By the way, one of the few things that we've managed to do unanimously in the, in the state legislature, Senator. So that will help us for some helping professionals, not all, but some. We have to work in concert, as you mentioned, with community mental health, because we're one full system. Schools don't operate separate and distinct from the community. They operate in concert with the, the community. Our children are in fact in community seven-eighths of the time in schools, one-eighth of their day. And so it's important that what we do to support young people in schools is also available in, in community as, as well. And then with jobs now available increasingly, there's a greater interest on the part of ed prep institutions, institutions of higher education, to develop these young people, counselors, nurses, school social workers, school psychologists. There's a greater interest on the part of our young people to go into these fields, because they see that they can have jobs in their communities, in their state, without having to travel to get a, a job. So we're, we're moving on up. I mean, we're, we are improving this field in a pretty substantial basis in support of young people. Thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Can I push back on your, nothing to a third of a billion?
Sure.
I mean, when I was in the legislature, the, the mantra was, get rid of categoricals, we know how to spend the money best. And instead, you know, so I, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean it was nothing. It means that there was, there could have been plenty of money. When we do categoricals, we reduce the per pupil funding. And so, you know, instead of $7,500, I don't know what the number is, it's now 7,200 with all these categoricals. So some of that 75 could have been used for mental health or for all these areas where it's now categorical. So it doesn't necessarily, you know, I'm seeing all these categoricals. I, those were things that the left, you know, and people were saying, you know, we don't want any categoricals, maybe because they didn't like how the conservatives or Republicans were putting them in as categoricals. But I just, you know, when I hear that it was nothing, it didn't necessarily mean it was nothing. It could have been a lot if, if districts would have prioritized it for the money that they were given. Just wanted to push back on that.
Thank you. We appreciate your presentation. The next item on today's agenda is a presentation on Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan Goal One, to expand early childhood learning opportunities. We welcome our presenters. In the room today, we have Dr. Michelle Harmel, Deputy Superintendent in the Division of P-20 System and Student Transitions, Ms. Sabrua Walraven, Director in the Office of Child Development and Care, Ms. Johnny Tatum, Director of the Office of Early Childhood Development and Family Education. And joining us virtually, we have Mr. Richard Lauer, Director of the Office of Preschool and Out-of-School Time Learning-
Thank you.
And Ms. Cynthia Derby, Director of the Office of Head Start State Collaboration. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I'm going to kick us off as Liz gets everything organized with our presenters who are online and joining us by Zoom. And I'd like to share that, as always, this is a hard-working team, and Richard Lauer is in Washington, DC, working hard on all things Office of Great Start related. So he will join us virtually as well as Cynthia Derby. Do you want me to give you a minute? Let's make sure they can hear us. There, she, yep. Thank you. Thank you, Richard. And Cynthia, can you hear us? Perfect. And will you just let us know that we can hear you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Thank you so much. And Richard Lauer is going to share his screen, because doing that allows you to see them as they present. So, Richard, if you would put the PowerPoint up, that would be most appreciated. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are talking today about Goal One, which is expand early childhood learning opportunities with the full OGS director team. Thank you, Richard. You can go to the next slide. We're talking predominantly about Goal One, because it's, it's developmentally upstream and it affects all other goals, which will be touched on throughout the presentation by our directors. However, I do want to mention Goal Eight, providing adequate and equitable, equitable school funding, because all of the changes and advancements for young children would not have come about without significant fiscal investment. We know that different children have different needs, and different needs have different costs. And the investment in early childhood learning opportunities through the leadership of the Michigan Department of Education- through the leadership of the Michigan Department of Education, our OGS team, our legislature, and our governor, has yielded the significant results that you'll hear about today. We'd like to celebrate 12 years of amazing work to expand early childhood learning opportunities through the tireless efforts and with the support of many of those on the team. So we're going to address the metrics related to Goal One. As noted on the slide, the number and percent of children served in GSRP, the number of children eligible for GSRP, and the National Institute for Early Education Research Annual Yearbook Ratings. But we're going to go beyond just the metrics. We have more to share around the work of our Office of Great Start. So they're going to share more broadly than the metrics, which will include numbers of students served and funding that has happened along the way. And I'm going to hand it over to Richard Lauer to start with some of that data.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. So the first chart here on GSRP funding is not a new chart you've seen before. GSRP has become a bipartisan, or if you will, a non-person program that has seen major investments during times that leadership of both major parties has been in the legislature and governor's office. Of course, members of the State Board of Education collectively over time have also been champions of GSRP, and we thank you for that. All along the way, over these 14 years you see on the screen, GSRP has been extremely fortunate to see three major spikes in investment. Uh, important to this is that, um, as part of that, is recognition that GSRP is part of the educational continuum. So as you will see in the 13 through 15 fiscal years under the Snyder administration, and then also again in more recent years under the Whitmer administration. And you'll see the actual, uh, allocations for the most recent years, uh, for the 67% increase and the 26% increase. Now, one thing you did not see on the prior slide that you'll see here in this slide is the true impact of the pandemic on GSRP, and that being enrollment, uh, impact. And just like it was in kindergarten and just like in the latter years through especially the early elementary grades, enrollment took a hit in the pandemic. So the important thing to note that you'll see is that the intermediate school districts, which are the grantees for GSRP, and their local partners being all the LEAs, the public school academies, and the 34% of grant, uh, of allocations that go to community-based organizations currently, they worked tremendously hard to dig out of that decrease, that 28% decrease in enrollment over two years. That was an amazing job they did. And you see, we're back on the increase of 36% with a targeted enrollment, uh, of 52,254 children for this coming year. And more importantly, because of the flexibilities we offered over top, uh, over these pandemic years and into this new year with MDE's recommendation of a new program option called Extended Program, which adds an extra day to the week for five days and extra weeks to the year, six minimum from 30 to 36 weeks to match the K-12 calendar year. That ultimately has assisted in additional children being enrolled for this coming year. You'll see 8,700 immediately enrolled into this new program option of five days a week, 36 weeks per, uh, for their school year. And wonderfully, you see that huge arch in purple. That is an amazing trend line. Many states do not have that, to see 164% increase in enrollment over the last 14 years. So now I will turn, uh, I will go into the fact that GSRP has also been a, a benefit to see parity in the per child with the per pupil foundation. And more importantly, seeing the importance of investing in quality and, and the fact that it takes a little bit more to, uh, pay for early childhood. So GSRP definitely caught up over the decades, uh, and caught up in this last decade with the amount per child. And we see a 32%, 0.5% increase in the last couple of years. That brought in a lot of almost 100 LEAs back into the system for GSRP, uh, as providers. Awesome. And it definitely has helped in terms of maintaining stability in the system. Uh, what is also wonderful to acknowledge is that the cost of GSRP, when you add days and weeks, that adds additional costs. The legislature and governor acknowledged that. You see a little bit more, uh, is paid for, that 20%. And as we're working toward the governor's universal pre-K goal that she put out for GSRP to expand to, we are increasing the eligibility to, from 250 to 300% as we step up to that goal. Uh, just to acknowledge another year as number one in the country in quality on the year, on the near national rankings. What is also amazing is because of this funding investment, we have jumped majorly in the funding level ranking in the country, uh, to number six. Uh, now, what we will see is when we talk about funding, we're going to be talking about access. There's a little lag here, but I expect in next year's book, we will see a major jump there as well. So to the Governor Whitmer's universally accessible pre-K program, her target, based on, uh, average population, birth cohort of 118,000, the target is 87,000 kids because of course there's parental choice, uh, for the variety of private, in-home, no pre-K, et cetera. So we want to honor parent choice. So 87,000 of that 118, that's the target, 75%. Uh, and it's also on par with other states who have implemented UPK or cities, major cities like Boston, uh, Seattle, Tulsa, 75%. So we can build on GSRP, grow it with some accommodations and flexibility, and we will be able to get this 87,000 over time. Uh, she has put a pre-K for all action team in, in, uh, uh, to the charge to put a recommendation document in place by December. Dr. Michael Rice is on that team. Uh, at least, uh, Director Lisa Brewer-Wallraven, my colleague and I are, uh, on that team as experts for content and childcare and for GSRP, along with the childcare licensing director, Emily Leidlaw. And so we look forward to, um, sharing that in a future meeting if interested. And I would say with, with that now, I can turn the presentation over, uh, to my colleague, Lisa Brewer-Wallraven, who is going to be sharing more about, uh, the enhancements to serving children and families through increasing the number of providers, services, and programs, which go beyond the Goal One metrics. Lisa?
Thanks, Richard. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us here this morning to share more about our work. Uh, the Child Development and Care Office is in place to ensure that all children and families have access to high-quality care and early learning experiences. Our primary focus is to support childcare providers, early educators, and out-of-school time providers to increase the number of high-quality early learning and out-of-school time opportunities that are available. Currently, our childcare assistance is being provided to 25,633 low-income families, which have 44,470 children, uh, who are, then engaged in programs for children birth through 13. Over the last several years, as we have been, um, working through the pandemic, we were fortunate enough to receive an additional 1.4 billion, that's with a B, dollars to support our efforts to make sure that children and families have access to safe, affordable, high-quality childcare. And throughout the pandemic, and as we've been coming out of the pandemic, we have been focused on keeping childcare providers open, making sure that families have access to care that meets their needs, and trying to keep costs down for families. We did that through a variety of activities, but a few that I wanted to highlight this morning are specific to the grants that we offer to childcare providers. We offered nine rounds of grants, which have been as unprecedented, uh, in our program, and that meant that over $900 million went directly to childcare providers to help keep them open, to help keep staff in those programs, and to be accessible for children and families. In two of those grant rounds, we actually offered 38,000 individuals' bonus checks for continuing to work in those programs during the highest need times. Uh, next slide, Richard. Um, we have been able, through now coming out of the pandemic, to keep certain policy changes that were put into place available for children, families, and providers. One of the big pieces that we've been able to maintain is to move to a better business model or business practice for reimbursing childcare providers. We are now reimbursing providers on a full-time and part-time basis, utilizing enrollment versus attendance, which means that we're creating stability in payments for providers as well as for families. We've also been able to maintain the higher income eligibility for families to receive childcare assistance. Um, in 2019, our entrance eligibility for the assistance was only at 130% of the federal poverty level, and now we are able to include families up to 200% of the federal poverty level. Another piece that supports Goal Three, which you were just hearing about related to health, safety, and wellness, is our partnership with the Department of Health and Human Services to offer infant early childhood mental health services to children who are participating in early learning programs. Next slide, Richard. A few other recent accomplishments. Um, in May of 2022, in partnership with Childcare Licensing, which is located at Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, we embarked on a major project to increase the supply of childcare across the state, again, making sure that we're meeting the needs of families. That project focused on facility improvements, startup funding, workforce support, and business support for our providers. And as of September 15th, happy to say we have 985 newly licensed childcare programs across the state. We have 2,123 programs who have expanded their capacity to serve more children and families. Um, some of the other efforts to highlight under that is our apprenticeship, uh, program that we're starting across the state in partnership with Labor and Economic Opportunity and Michigan Works entities to ensure that, uh, as we have a priority in Goal Six, to have more individuals with credentials. We've been working on family childcare networks. So that's to support licensed family home providers. We anticipate supporting 400 providers through that project. $2.4 million went to regional childcare planning grants in 81 communities across the state. Uh, that is in partnership with the 10 Michigan Economic Development Corporation regions, so that plans are being developed locally to meet needs of children and families. And then our other big initiative was $50 million to support facility improvement and expand opportunities across the state. And now I am going to transition it over to Johnny Tatum to talk more about the opportunities in her office.
Thank you for inviting us here to share about the great work our teams are doing to, uh, serve Michigan's families. I'm Director of the Early Childhood Development and Family, uh, and Education Office here, and we are responsible for early on in preschool special education, uh, Great Start Collaboratives, family engagement work, as well as implementation of PDGB V implemented activities. So my first slide, uh, enumerates the work of early on Michigan's Early Intervention System for Children Birth Through Three who have a disability, a developmental delay, or are at risk of delays due to medical conditions and their families. What that graph shows is, uh, the increase, primarily the increase in number of children served. It also captures a dip that we experienced during the pantap, pandemic, but I would also point out that the steep increase of families served is, um, a testament to the work of those in the field and a benefit of a million-dollar increase, representing 5% increase in funding to serve the increasing numbers of children and to meet the intensity of their needs. So in that graph, number of children served refers to those actually found eligible and actively receiving intervening services, and the percentage refers to the percent of children birth through three according to state population estimates for that year. And those numbers are provided to us by, um, the Federal Office of Special Education. So a great deal of increase in outreach and service, and, um, I'm very proud of that. Our next slide outlines the work of the Great Start Collaborative System. The Great Start Collaborative System is the systems-building mechanism which establishes, builds, and strengthens active partnerships on the local level between community-based organizations, ISDs, LEAs, and families. The Great Start Collaborative System has also received an increase in funding, a significant increase of 46% to ensure coordination, alignment, and expansion of that infrastructure. Some high-level strategies that have been implemented on the local level have included building trauma-informed communities through strengthening families initiatives, increasing supports to children and families related to nutrition and physical activity through increasing referrals to WIP programs and, and services, and increasing the number of foster families and kinship care across Michigan. I also point out that an additional $4 million in new funding has been allocated to access, to increase access, uh, on the part of families to literacy materials. A couple of, uh, primary strategies in that area include talking is teaching, which builds emergent language and literacy, um, to children starting from birth, and the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, amongst other initiatives, that gets books and literacy materials directly in the hands of families. Great Start Collaboratives also strengthen and support transitions between early childhood, uh, these early programs and preschool, and then the strengthening the transition between pre-K and kindergarten to make sure that children enter their kindergarten experience thriving and ready to maximally benefit from that, from those programs. Our office also oversees the federally competitive grant, of which Michigan is one of 20 recipients to support in our state specifically 10 regional literacy support network hubs, which aligns with the prosperity, 10 prosperity regions in Michigan. In partnership with hospitals, schools, libraries, and other local, local organizations, um, those relationships implemented through the Great Start Collaboratives to increase access to literacy materials, which includes distributing thousands of books to children and families, hosting parent -- hosting parent workshops and events centered on literacy and supporting emergent language and literacy development, and then also providing early literacy trainings for local providers. $14 million in additional state funding will help sustain those literacy network hubs that were established through the PDGB V grant into the future to help measure the impact on children's and families of these hubs, but then also to sustain the work of the hubs. And with that, I hand the mic to Cynthia Derby.
Thank you, Johnny. Good morning. I'm Cynthia Derby, the Director of the Head Start State Collaboration Office. The purpose of the Head Start State Collaboration Office is to facilitate coordination between Head Start agencies and other state and local entities that are serving eligible children from birth to age five and their families. So as an Office of One, I focus on building relationships and strengthening connections among all programs and services throughout the state that benefit young children, their families, and the staff who care for them. Now, looking at the top of my slide, you'll see that in 2022, our Michigan Head Start program served 20,877 children ages three to five and 8,336 infants and toddlers and their families. This is a total of 29,213 Michigan children that were served by Head Start programs. Each year, my scope of work includes numerous projects that support the Head Start community. So I'd like to briefly describe three projects that I've worked on just to give you an idea of what I do. This year, I partnered with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and created a data-share agreement that provides Head Start programs with contact data that are for children that are categorically eligible for Head Start and early Head Start services based upon their participation in the food assistance program. This data-share agreement is in place to ensure that all children who qualify for Head Start services are able to enroll. Next, I support the Early Head Start Childcare Partnership. Approximately every other month, I organize and facilitate virtual meetings to support and connect the grant recipients of the Early Head Start Childcare Partnership Grant. These federal grants provide funding to early care and education programs that are operating within each community and includes family and group home settings. They will deliver early Head Start services for children ages zero to three in their childcare setting. This partnership allows more choices for families and enhances the quality of care across a variety of early care and education settings. In addition, we have a memorandum of understanding with the Office of Child Development and Care, that's Lisa Brewer-Wallraven's office that she just spoke of, and the early childhood childcare grant recipients to enable the childcare providers to bill for subsidized childcare payments for the full amount of time that qualifying children are in their care. For my last project, I've been working to strengthen the transition process of children and families from Head Start to kindergarten. Through an activity of our preschool development grant, Birth Through Five, I participated in a state team that developed and implemented a peer-learning group, bringing together 27 members from preschool and kindergarten, leadership and teaching. The preschool-kindergarten teams learned together about creating smooth transition plans to support their children and their families, with an inclusive focus on those who are multilanguage learners and families of children with disabilities. So that's all I have for today. Thank you for providing the time for me to share some of the highlights of my office. I'm honored to work at the Michigan Department of Education. My work to ensure that all qualifying families have access to an early care and education program supports Goal One of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan to expand early childhood learning opportunities. And now back to Mr. Richard Lauer.
Thank you. So beyond the Great Start Radiance Program, which, for Goal One, which I will speak to a little bit more, I wanted to talk about a few other programs and initiatives out of my office. To start with, back in 2017, under the Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant, we started to develop an age-appropriate public pre-K program for three-year-olds that is center-based. The idea was very forward-thinking, knowing that eventually, as we expanded GSRP, someone would be thinking about three-year-olds. So here we are. The Strong Beginnings Program, as it has been termed, is Section 32T in the State School Aid Act. And over time, the preschool development grant that is under Johnny Tatum's office, I used several million dollars, $2.2 million of that grant, to fund piloting of that model in 10 sites over four ISDs for 140 kids, working kids, 14 three-year-olds in those classrooms. Fortunately, that funding ran out in December of 2022. But the four ISDs, being Wayne, Heritage Southwest, Northeast, and Marion, rallied and said, "We wanted this to continue while we increase expansion of GSRP." They worked to maintain that $2.2 million in the State School Aid Act, and then other ISDs, along with them, worked to increase the investment for fiscal year '24 to $18 million. The idea is to continue to refine the model through a pilot status and serve, as you see, over 1,100 more children over the next three years. So again, investment proactive approach to ensuring that we get the model right for our three-year-olds in Michigan and be a leader in three-year-old pre-K, just like Michigan's a leader in four-year-old pre-K with the Great Start Radiance Program. Back to GSRP. So as you can see here, the GSRP is at a phenomenal $522.7 million for fiscal year '24. And as it showed on the chart earlier, we are, the ISDs and their local partners, are anticipating serving 52,250 children this year. Amazing. But how, what are the supports? What are the flexibilities I spoke about? Well, some of those came in legislation. $35 million in addition was allocated as a supplemental that also went into fiscal year '24 that allowed $25,000 per new classroom or a classroom that expanded access to children. So you can see the number of classrooms that were opened in fiscal year '23, that we gave an additional $25,000 to the ISD and their local partner for, and then another 230 classrooms in fiscal year '24. That is awesome, that we have 365 new or expanded classrooms in just two years. $5 million in additional money is for a continued media awareness campaign. Again, generously, Ms. Johnny Tatum's office with the PDGB V grant was assisting in some statewide GSRP enrollment recruitment money. This particular money is new in the state budget, and it allows for working over the next two years with parents to raise their awareness of GSRP, to promote enrollment of GSRP, and work on some coordination of enrollment systems. There we go. Also, as being over school age, after-school and summer learning programs, I just wanted to make note that we continue to receive our federal Title IV Part B grant, and that is the 21st Century Community Learning Centers. We do have a nationally-recognized program in this area as well, in a couple, for a couple different reasons, evaluation, outcomes, et cetera. We did have an impact of the pandemic, and we are still working to recover on the enrollment. But for fiscal year '22, we are served, we served 15,536 youth in that program. And we continue to focus on outreach and enrollment in those after-school programs and summer programs to be able to continue to focus on ensuring that the summer learning loss is minimized between spring and fall. Major accomplishment is our state school time grants. Now, this was also an M.D. policy recommendation for the last two years. And this is something that, four years ago, we had $0 in the state budget. We had $50 million going in school aid funds into fiscal year '24. And initially, this started during pandemic with $5 million in gear funds, the governor's emergency relief funds. Then it transferred to $5 million in federal ARPA funds. Then we went to $25 million last year. Here we are, $50 million. Over those first two years with $5 million, we served 24,000 youths. 12,000. And so we have 50, nearly, nearly 50,000 youths served in those two years. So we are doing well. And those are targeted to private, community-based partners, because schools had so much money in ARPA to do after-school as a permissive area. This money from the state focused on private, community-based partners, and they could partner with schools. So the last area is, we have all this expansion in GSRP, and on a school time. We need staff, just like the rest of the education community. So we engaged in a grow-your-own approach, and it's called Future Proud Michigan Educator Launch. And Dr. Delso Chapman has spoken to you about this initiative out of the Office of Career Tech Ed before. That is a live link to it. The logo is in the upper right corner. And proud to say, over the last couple of years, in partnership with our office and in Office of Career Tech Ed and Office of OEE, Educator Excellence, we've been able to assist in growth from 55 to 93 different schools having the CTE Education General Programs. And we continue to grow. And we look at between six, 21 new grants that we gave for next year, growing another 21 programs. 41 credentials were earned just this past year. So we love the fact that we're able to support across-office, cross-division initiative and guide it to be able to better serve our early childhood programs and our after-school and summer. And most importantly, we have a pipeline being built, because part of Future Proud Michigan Educator Launch is that we have a connection of over, at this point, 1,700 CTE students in the Education General Program Pipeline registered in the My Registry Professional Development System on their way toward a credential. So even though 41 earned them, we have a pipeline building toward additional credentials so that we are helping to influence Goals Six and Seven. With that, I'll turn it back to Dr. Michelle Harmon.
I'm going to hand it back to Dr. Rice for questions from the board.
Thank you very much. Presenters for a terrific presentation, both in person and virtually. Board members, questions or comments? Questions or comments?
I have a comment. I want to say thank you, Richard, and to the staff and the GSRP department for all of the great work you guys have been doing. This is a nationally-recognized program, as you stated. And this is a model when we have national conversations. So I'm very happy about the work that you guys have done, especially given that you have not had the resources, you know, the funding that you've needed for the program, as well as for the department, staff-wise. So thank you for your dedication. I am really happy and excited that we are moving towards universal pre-K here in Michigan. Definitely something I've talked about on the national level, that this is something that we need nationally. But I just want to thank you guys for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Other comments by board members? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I certainly concur with Board Member Tilly's assessment. I think that there are several areas in early childhood that the department has recognized through feedback from the locals, feedback from staff, on where changes needed to happen, most significantly, meeting the needs of expanding weeks and expanding times for GSRP, more coordination with Head Start, and helping parents understand the difference between qualifying for Head Start and being able to have their child attend preschool or GSRP, depending on which bucket, for lack of a better term, that would fit into transportation for children in GSRP, full-day programs that then goes into quality childcare, because many parents don't work on a 9:00 to 3:00 calendar, obviously. So I commend the department. I appreciate the legislature and the governor for their continued support monetarily on this and understanding the need and providing the funding. And I guess we'll see at this point, because it's my understanding that the departments that are talked about in this presentation will be predominantly moved to the MyLeap office here in the next couple of months. And so we will expect the same trajectory to service more children, to meet the needs of our Michigan families, whatever those are, because they do change. So kudos to the department, kudos to the staff, because this is children's first introduction to what school is. And just the fact that they're learning routines, that they understand group dynamics, that they can get in line, and they are exposed to reading every day in one way or the other, be it if somebody reads a book to them or they're able to see words on the wall and talk about favorite books and role-play and all of those things that happen in those very busy early childhood classrooms, if anyone's ever observed one. It seems to change about every two minutes. Lots of energy. So thank you. And as I said, we will await changes that are going to happen in the future here.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Other reflections from board members?
And I'm happy that Dr. Pritchett brought it up and not me, but you know that these programs are moving to MyLeap. And when we look at the performance and the fact that we went from a ranking of top three to number one as it relates to quality, particularly in GSRP. Number one, thank you all for all of your hard work. As much as I get an opportunity to, I make sure I'm putting it out in the atmosphere, the work that you all are doing for our children. And, you know, just knowing that we will be watching diligently. And I'm looking forward to, and hopefully, Dr. Rice, and your summary, as you usually summarize things, being able to tell us, like, when will we hear more about how this program will be moved to this new department? How we will be able to watch vigilantly to ensure that we are a part of those discussions and that we are making sure that our children have no loss as it relates to the services that you all have provided here. So I would love to hear an update on that and really just know when we will be getting an update. And then the other part is just thinking back to some of the work that we were doing around early childhood development. We had a SAMSA grant years ago. I don't know if any of you all remember this, but SAG and I happened to be the pilot community for the state of Michigan. And we were really looking at, how do we make sure that we're weaving mental health services into early childhood development? And as we talk about the providers and we talk about the staffing, can you talk about any of the things that we're doing around the programming to ensure that staff have the tools and the supports that they need to make sure that they're preparing our children at this young at this young age around even mental health services? We're even looking at early mental health psychologists back then, and the shortage was there. Just thoughts on that.
Sure. So that's our partnership with Department of Health and Human Services. And some of the primary things that they're doing with providers across the state include, they offer trainings that are in the registries, so providers can join those, learn more on particular topics or behaviors that children might be experiencing. They hold office hours, so providers can call during those office hours and talk one-on-one with a consultant to get advice, resources that will support them in their program. They do cohorts where you can join with peers and share and talk and learn from each other, as well as the consultants, on strategies to use in classrooms. And then they have direct one-on-one consultation where they come into the program. They may work with just the providers. If they have permission and the family is engaged as well, they can work with the family. So that often benefits not only the particular child and family that they called to receive that guidance for, but the rest of the classrooms and the programs, because all of the staff are learning those skills and traits. So those are some of the primary activities that we currently have happening.
Very good. And I heard like the parent engagement programming around strengthening families is a piece that we are using. I know that there are many, so are you all happy with that? I think it for me.
Good. Okay. Thank you very much. Other board members? Other board members? Ms. Ms. Miller, would you care to share? Okay. Anyone else? Going once, twice? Let me say just a couple, three, four words.
I will before we get into your closing. I do want to raise this, and I'm not sure if it goes into the presentation that we've given, but around daycare. And I've talked to you about this, Dr. Rice. We've heard from childcare providers around the star ratings and that preventing childcare centers from getting the resources that they need. That's something that we continue to hear a lot about. I don't know if anyone wants to speak to that.
I think what you've shared, and happy to have you embellish this, but I think what you've shared is, is that though we've had increased allocations from the state, in part through the ginormous federal pandemic relief packages, but also state funding as well, the fact is, is that the state funding can't possibly fully fill in for the pandemic relief. So we've moved from 130% of the federal poverty limit as our threshold to 200% of the federal poverty limit as our threshold, pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. So there's a power associated with that. We've increased the number of childcare centers by almost 1,000, power associated with that. The funding levels are set by the state legislature, and the state legislature's revenue is capped relative to what they have. So there continues to be a substantial need for childcare resources in the state. There's no question about it, notwithstanding the improvements in that area. Do you care to share additionally?
I think you touched on the highlights, I think. As we think about Great Start to Quality, and you were connecting that, we just reimagined that system to encourage it to be more provider-led or provider-driven. And we are partnering with public policy associates. We got a grant from Office of Childcare to do some research on Great Starts Equality, and I'm happy to share what we hope to learn as we implement the new program and encourage more providers to participate.
Follow-up or no?
No.
Okay, very good. Ms. Tilly?
I just wanted to point out, Richard spoke about the pipeline that's being created. Marty sent out the press release about the legislature changing the laws, which was a long time coming, with teachers being able, retired teachers being able to get back in the field, which over the years, they've spoken about, a lot of them, a lot of the conversations that I've had with them, they were willing to get back into the field, but it affected their pensions. So now, they will be able to get back in the classrooms if they want to without that being a hindrance. And there may be some opportunities where some of them may go possibly to ECE. So I'm so happy about that. We can fill in some of those slots with our retired teachers that want to get back in the classroom without being penalized. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, if you want me to share, I can share a little. I guess it certainly is impressive, to some degree, the amount of effort and money being spent to get parents to turn over their kids at an earlier age to government-funded systems.
Thank you very much. So I want to thank our presenters for a terrific presentation and more to the point, your leadership of this important area in public education. What you are doing is helping us work with young people and their families earlier to provide them with as strong a start as possible so that they are as successful as possible when they move into a K-12 setting. In many cases, they are in a K-12 setting when they are in preschool. In many cases, in childcare. In many cases, in Head Start. In many cases, in Great Start. They are in our public schools. This is not new-fangled, but the expansion is certainly new. And we're talking about five functions, five elements that comprise the Office of Great Start. We're talking about early childhood development and family education. We're talking about Head Start. We're talking about the Great Start Readiness Program. We're talking about childcare, and we're talking about out-of-school-time learning. And two of those five have a single director. But the fact of the matter is, you've got five functions, if you will, and each of these is complicated, and each of these has been growing. And they've been growing individually, and they've been growing in collaboration with one another. There are states across the country that are looking at what we're doing in early childhood education. I mean, that's just what it is. Top-rated quality for the last five years in the country. That's not our impression, that's the impression of NEAR out of New Jersey of all states. So we appreciate that endorsement. We appreciate the opportunity to have some measure of silver lining in this area from the pandemic, as we did with our meals, right? So universal meals are an outgrowth of what happened during the pandemic. The expansion of childcare is an outgrowth in part of what happened during the pandemic. We realize the increased need. And this realization of increased need, it's not coming from a political perspective, it's coming from an economic perspective as well. There are businesses across the state and across the country that very badly want improved childcare and improved preschool so that parents are able to go to work and know that their children are safe and that they're growing in childcare facilities and in schools across the country. Again, not just my perspective, it's the perspective of many chambers of commerce across the state and across the country. I appreciate the work that you're doing, that your staffs are doing. Job well done. Thank you so much. So, board, it is 12:22, and we're going to adjourn for lunch. We will pick back up here at 1:15.